Great, I'd like to call the June Common Council leading to order. Would you please stand for the Pledgeable Agent?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country, with all due diligence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please conduct a roll call?
Heidi?
Hi.
Cusker?
Good.
Narge?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Here.
Campbell?
Brown?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Mayor.
First item of business is the approval of the minutes from now. It's the pleasure of the council. Mr. Brown?
Madam President, I move to be here and approve the minutes as communicated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Williamson, thank you. It's moved and seconded to approve the made minutes from the common council meeting. Are there any council questions or comments regarding those minutes?
Okay.
All those in favor of the approval of the minutes as communicated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Minutes are approved. Presentation of disputed claims?
Seeing none.
Presentations of petitions and communications?
None.
Reports of city offices on file in the city clerk's office?
Clerk's office, April. Water Police and Control Department, April. Water Works Department, April. And 2014 annual report. Police Department, April. And Fleet Maintenance Department, March.
Thank you. And just as a reminder to the public, those reports are available at clerk's office for your reading pleasure during regular business hours. Okay, we have one ordinance received for a second reading, ordinance 2015-12.
An ordinance to amend ordinance 2014-23, an ordinance fixing the salaries of the appointed officers and employees of the City of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2015, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments.
Mr. Clean Carrier?
Uh, move to hear ordinance 2015-12.
Thank you, Mrs. Narge. I say it. It's moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-12. Mr. Mayor, would you like to refresh the public's memory of this ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. Chairman, as you know, for about the past year and a half now, the City of Lafayette has been administering its own parking enforcement in the downtown area, parking garages, surface lots. And as we continue to evaluate that, we have one position that after looking at that for about the last eighteen months, we feel needs to be elevated to the next level of pay. Obviously, it doesn't come out of tax money. It comes out of the revenues from the parking operations itself. And we feel this young man's doing a great job, and he deserves the next level of pay. So, we'd like to change that in the ordinance. So, once that's done, we'll have him sign a new employment papers, and we'll give him a raise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-12? Seeing none, would the clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Hi.
Cusker?
Hi.
Narge?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you. The first ordinance for first reading this evening is ordinance 2015-14.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Tivigny County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from NV to R1U, 1827 Wilson Street, Chuck Newton petitioner.
Mr. Brown?
Madam President, I move to be here and approve ordinance 2015-14.
Thank you. Mr. Downing?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to hear an approval ordinance 2015-14. Um, Mr. Chalzink, I don't see the petitioner here this evening. Would you like to speak, or would you like Mr. Chalzink just to enlighten us? That's what is yours.
As the council heard at the caucus meeting, this was a residential and continues to be residential zone that was rezoned to neighborhood business to allow Mr. Newton to put an office in about eight years ago. He has since wants to go ahead and sell it as a residence. It's maintained its residential state, and as the area plan commission staff indicates, it's actually been an improvement to the neighborhood. He's done a good job of maintaining it and improving it, and they recommend rezoning back to residential. The area plan commission voted unanimously in favor of that, and that's what's before you.
Comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-14? Okay, seeing none, would the clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Hi.
Cusker?
Hi.
Narge?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance for first reading this evening is ordinance 2015-15.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Tivigny County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R1U to NVU, 1205 North Ninth Street and 1210 North Tenth Street, Food Finders Food Bank petitioner.
Mrs. Williamson?
I move for passage of ordinance number 2015-15 on first and final reading.
Mr. Brown?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance 2015-15. Mr. Riley, did you want to speak to this ordinance this evening?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Kevin Riley with Riley, Teeter &amp; Schreier. I represent the petitioner, Food Finders Food Bank. Katie O'Malley-Bunder, the executive director with the agency, is here today as well to answer any questions you may have. We're requesting a rezone of this property from R1U to NVU. It consists of a 38,000 square foot warehouse and a parking lot. Food Finders has this property under contract purchase with a projected closing in October of this year. They also have the single-family home located to the northwest under contract with a projected closing in November of this year. So, um, we received unanimous approval from the APC last month, and we request your approval as well. I'm happy to answer any questions again.
This moves the current facility from Olympia to the full operation.
Yeah, let me explain. We've got, so we rezoned the old church property up on Green Bush a few months back, which is going to house some classroom and office space. This site here will be the food storage warehouse and then also office space as well. So, yes, the, uh, the operation Olympia will move to this location once it's renovated.
Thank you.
Yes.
Comments or questions from council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley. Comments or questions from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-15? Seeing none, would the clerk please conduct a roll call vote? Oh, sorry, come on up.
My name is Dan Altipeter. I live at 1161 East 430 South in Lafayette, Indiana. I own an investment property at the corner of 1037 Robert Street. A little bit of history, if I might. I look around the room, and I think I'm one of the senior citizens in the room. I look back at what happens in that neighborhood and what has happened. Probably a lot of people don't know that that was originally Kestner Lumber Company. This was prior to APC. Venetian Blind Company acquired that property back in the sixties at some point in time. They did what is called an inside-outside build, which was stretching the ordinance at that time as far as it could be stretched, that is to say, that they did an addition to the building, completely sheltering the original building, and then tore it down from the inside. My questions are, and my statements are, that the APC or the Board of Zoning Appeals say that this change is going to be a consistent use. I submit that it is not consistent, it's very inconsistent. When I take dry warehouse space, I acquired my property at Robert Street sometime fifteen, twenty years ago. That building has been essentially sitting there as a dry warehouse, zero activity. Now, we're going to have a kitchen, we're going to have large refrigerators, we're going to have refrigeration units along a wall that is 288 feet long and 16 feet high. Those refrigeration units are going to be set in an area that's 15 foot, five inches from the building, of which the easement for the utility lines has to be taken out of that. I'm told that the refrigerating units, because of the design of the building, are going to have to be on that side. That wall is going to be nothing but an echo wall. The noise of those refrigeration units is going to project to the east. All of the residential properties there are going to suffer from that. Uh, I don't believe that the APC and whoever is responsible for researching the use of this property did a good research. Again, I state, the building is not in consistent use. It would be very inconsistent use. When I look at the parking lot, there's simply one loading dock that may be accessed by a 40-foot semi unless they do major modification, which I'm told they're going to do. I have no animosity to Food Finders. I think they do a wonderful job in the community. I'm sure they do. But we're going to go to a traffic pattern at that building of many, many trucks coming in, many, many vehicles going out, many, many people working in the building. My concern is, is that the neighborhood now is called the north side. When Kestner Lumber Company and the building that I own was built, it was called the town of Linwood. I believe that the very time that Venetian Blind modified the building, that a mistake was made at that time. I believe by asking this zoning be changed from what it is now, which I believe is inconsistent to its use now, will further deteriorate the value of those properties of the north end. I would not be, uh, would not be at all against using the building as it has been used. It is there. We have to deal with it as a neighborhood. But I believe that the sound, the traffic, where it's all the talk about improving the north end of Lafayette, so as people come into Lafayette on North Ninth Street, we have a good vision for the city of Lafayette. I believe if we take that into consideration, all we're going to have is a loading docks loaded with semis and trucks, heavy traffic coming in only from Heath Street. It doesn't take an engineer to look towards Robert Street. You're not going to take large semis into Robert Street and get into the parking lot. They're going to come from Ninth, or they're going to come from Heath. My simple request is that this zoning be denied until we find out the DBA that's going to be put out by these refrigerator units, which I already know are going to be manifold. We need to look very seriously at what we're doing to the value of the properties to the east of that. I thank you for your time and consideration. Any questions?
Did you go to that area plan when they discussed?
I did.
And did they have comments?
If not discussed, these issues were not discussed one iota. And I simply say that the proper research was not done. This, it says in their area plan, or the Board of Zoning Appeals, the area plan says they researched it as consistent use. It is not consistent use. I've been there for fifteen or twenty years. It's been dry, unheated warehouse space. Now, we're going to make it into an office, we're going to make it into kitchens, we're going to make it into cold storage, large refrigeration units. I already aware that there's going to have to be special exceptions made to get the refrigeration units along that wall. And it's simply going to be an echo wall where all the noise during the summertime when people want to come out of their houses. And if you drive around that neighborhood, there are a lot of very nice older homes. Many of them are being replenished and refurbished. I'm proud of the rental property that I own there. I provide good living quarters for two families there. And that neighborhood does not need nor want nor desire this type of activity going on. So, with respect to everyone, I ask that the request be denied.
Do you mind me asking where you got the plans for the placements of the units, where you got your information?
I talked to the lady that is at the requister of the zoning at the last meeting at the BZ, and I asked her, where are we going to put the refrigeration units? She said, we're going to put them along the east wall. I questioned her, well, we have to work through that. I questioned her about the loading dock. Another statement that was made by her, I can't say her name, I know she was the requister. She represented, uh, wheels on wheels or whatever, you know? And she said that they wanted to also put a, a, um, I'm sorry, an artistic display on the east wall, or the west wall of the building. I don't find that to be conducive to a good neighborhood. What some people consider art, maybe others do not. So, to challenge that, in my opinion, is not a good thing to do.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, I was representing with the APC. I think it came to us as approved by the staff, and I think they researched.
That is correct, it did. You're right, the staff.
Yes, it'd come from the staff who researches. Mr. Brown, I think, was there also, and it came through as they recommended approval under the, what was going in there, and I assume that they researched everything that we.
I would share with you, if I might, Kestner Lumber Company never came out. The use of the building as it has for the last twenty years was always stated that this is consistent use. That is not a fact. It simply is not.
The consistent use refers to?
Consistent use refers to a dry warehouse storage.
Well, lumber, a lot of it is zoned for the way that it's zoned. The consistent use for the way that it's zoned, which is what they're speaking to tonight.
That's consistent, and I'm not arguing with them. I'm saying, if we continue to have dry warehouse storage where occasionally our trucks in and out, that's not what's going to happen here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Just a couple of, couple of points to make. You're only considering whether NVU is appropriate for this site. And I think area plan, commission staff indicated that it is. Area plan voted unanimously to approve that NVU is appropriate for this site.
Sure.
Sorry.
Is the microphone on?
Yeah, the staff has, staff unanimously recommended this. The plans for how this site is going to be developed have been changed a little bit since the APC meeting, and one of the biggest changes which, which may address one of the issues, which I think addresses one of the issues, is that the refrigeration units are being moved to the west side of the building as opposed to the east side, which means that the properties to the east, like the concern was that those units were going to be facing the street. Now, they're facing the parking lot with TRW to the west, and then the warehouse space isolating or separating those properties to the east from the refrigeration units. So, that should, um, satisfy that issue. In terms of the value of the area, there's no indication that this is going to devalue properties in that area. In fact, they're going to, Food Finders is investing near $2 million to improve and purchase this site. So, um, yeah, I think APC spoke pretty clearly about the appropriateness of this development. I think, again, we request your approval.
Thank you.
I'd like to say a few words. I care deeply about how the neighbors feel. I'm a neighbor in the New Chauncey neighborhood, so I get it. And we moved the compressor units. There are actually no exterior freezers or coolers. It's just the compressors, and there are four that are for a freezer and a cooler, and they'll be in the center of the, close to the center of the back side, so the Ninth Street side now. We're, we're actually incurring some additional expense just to do this because we want to keep the noise down. And we also will plant additional trees and shrubs if necessary, and, um, you know, we really care about, about making it as quiet as possible. We also, um, we'll have a meeting with all the neighbors that want to come before we do anything about painting a mural on the back side. So, if they don't want it, we won't have it. It's just an attempt to, to try to make it a little prettier, so.
The other concern that stretch period had was for the semi-traffic. How often is semi-traffic a consideration for your stuff?
Well, we have very few semi-trucks. We have box trucks more often, and we have, we own six box trucks, and they go out in the morning and come back in the evening. And, um, we, I estimate that once we are busier than we are now because we're bringing in more food, that we might have ten semi-trucks in a week. And, um, we are working with the city to create a better drive and move the entrance to the drive a little bit to make that easier in and out. So, and, um, there will be three docks on the back side of that building, but they will not be busy. And, and the plan is to have twelve employees working there, and that's all. And there's no kitchen in that building.
No kitchen?
No kitchen. No pub, no public access. That is strictly going to be a warehouse, so there won't be a lot of coming and going.
There's no, not a lot of foot traffic to come pick up goods or anything like that?
Well, there will be some car traffic to pick up food, but, um, but clients won't come into that building.
That's all over the church, they fall off.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks.
Not a second, not a second, Chairman. I would feel a little bit remiss. Typically, I don't get up and say too much, but I feel a little bit remiss if I didn't today because Food Finders has looked for several different options over the course of the last several years what to do, and when they brought this option to me, I told them that I was in full support of that, and I understand Mr. Altipeter's concern. I actually look at it differently. I think it's a plus for the neighborhood to have $2 million invested, have people working there, have the buildings fixed up, create some new life. The reality is that neighborhood struggles, and I think there's a lot of people in that neighborhood that benefit from Food Finders and the surrounding area and with the investment they're making to the church on Green Bush Street to put in their offices, teach classes. That's where the kitchens will be. That's where the people will be coming in and out. I think bringing that life and that enthusiasm and some things back there, and I hope they can work it out to get the mural on the building, something that the neighbors like, but liven it up. I, I view that, I view that as a positive. I'm hoping people see that. Maybe we'll get some more people down, and maybe some owner-occupied housing and get some people about thinking of living there again. So, um, like I said, I, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that when Katie brought this idea to me, I gave it my blessing, and I told her I thought it was a good idea, and I think it's good for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, do you want to address council again? I'm going to limit you this time to three minutes since you did speak previously.
I understand everybody's comments, and Tony, I respect you and appreciate it. You folks, I respect you, understand. I totally understand. I'm not here to be a negative person. I'm concerned about the refrigeration units and the traffic.
There is.
If you move the refrigerations to the other side of the building, do you know, can you answer what the DBA production is and what tonnage of refrigeration are you going to have there? That's my concern. And I know that when we look at that kind of tonnage of the warehouse space you're going to have, I'm going to have a lot of sound emitting from those refrigeration units north, south, east, or west. It makes no difference. And I respect everyone's position, believe me I do. I'm respectful of the work that you people do. We need you in the community. I'm not denying that. I'm not, that's not why I'm here. I'm simply looking at protecting people who live in that neighborhood, and the noise is not going to be easy to digest. And you're not going to know unless there's a severe, a complete study done, what the DBA is, how many tonnage, the exact position of them is, and how sound suppression is going to be utilized. When that is done, if they can say to me, and y'all can say to me, hey, it's going to be consistent with what we have now, I'm all for you. I'm for you 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Altipeter.
Your position. Thank you.
Further public comment? Any other comment from council? Mr. Brown?
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Altipeter, I really do. But I cannot believe that there is not going to be a positive benefit from this level of investment in our community, in this level of investment in that, in that specific neighborhood. Because I live about five blocks away from, from where that is, and I know what that neighborhood looks like. I know exactly how desperate that neighborhood is for investment, for people to come in who, to, who care about what's going on there. I am convinced that Food Finders actually does care about what's going to happen in that neighborhood. They do. And they will be good neighbors. They're offering, they're offering to include the neighborhood in each step of what they're going to do. So, trust me, you'll be heard. Your concerns will be, your concerns will be taken into consideration. And with the moving the refrigeration units to the other side of the building away from your property, I'm thinking that's going to go a long way to, uh, to dealing with the main, the main issue that you bring up. I, I'm going to have to support this, but like I said, nobody else, nobody else is going to come in, is going to come in and do these kind of things in that neighborhood. And, 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 and still, talk to neighbors about it. I'll be at those meetings when, when they, when they start their planning, and I hope to see you there, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Further comment from council? Would the clerk, clerk please conduct a roll call vote over the ordinance 2015-15?
Heidi?
Hi.
Cusker?
Hi.
Narge?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes ordinance for this evening. We have a resolution, uh, one resolution this evening, 2015-08.
A resolution to approve the Lafayette Housing Consortium Home Program and the City of Lafayette Community Development Block Grant Action Plan for 2015.
Mrs. Williamson?
I move for passage of resolution 2015-08 on first and final reading.
Mr. Downing?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass ordinance 2015-08 on final reading. Mrs. Jacobson?
Amy Jacobson, Community Development Director. Uh, this is a resolution to approve the action plan. This is the first year, first action plan for the five-year consolidated plan, which is 2015 through 2019. Um, staff prepared a five-year action plan, um, and through, through two public hearings, two focus group meetings, several one-on-one consultations with area, um, community leaders and agency directors, department heads. Also, there was data analysis and research done from HUD data and American survey data to determine the goals and priorities for the next five years. And this is, as I said, the program year 2015 action plan for home and CDBG funds. Uh, for the home allocation, the amount is $613,236 for this first program year. And, uh, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant funding, uh, the total is $601,774, but we also had $200,000 to reallocate from prior years and program income. So, the total amount for CDBG is $801,774. Any questions?
And you've outlined previously for us what those funds are going to, so are there any further comments or questions from council regarding this resolution? Thank you, Mrs. Jacobson.
Thank you.
Comments or questions from members of the public regarding resolution 2015-08? Seeing none, would the clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Hi.
Cusker?
Hi.
Narge?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to eight to zero.
Thank you. That concludes the resolution portion of the agenda. Are there any reports of standing committees this evening? Reports of special committees? Reports of the mayor? Okay, miscellaneous in new business, we do have a council appointment of Rick Hobbs for another four-year term on the Civil Service Commission, or you may remember it as the Police Merit Commission. Are there comments or concerns about Rick Hobbs' appointment to that position? All those in favor of the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the appointment stands. Then we move on to the fun stuff. All right, this is the time of year that we go through the standing tax abatements for the city. Um, the redevelopment commission traditionally looks at those first and determines the compliance or non-compliance of each standing abatement, and then it moves on to the council for us to have the same consideration. Um, Mr. Carson is with us this evening. Uh, we do have, I believe it's thirty-seven abatements, but we have condensed them to similar standings so that we may look at them together as a group based upon business.
Correct.
So, Mr. Carson is going to dance us through these this evening, and we will follow your lead.
Yes. Um, like you said, the redevelopment commission is the first step in this process where we vet those, and the redevelopment commission makes a recommendation to city council. So, starting at the top here, the first one is Caterpillar, which is a personal property abatement, and they were found in compliance and recommended to the council for such.
All right, is there a motion for substantial compliance for Caterpillar?
Some moved.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded for substantial compliance for Caterpillar. It's been moved and seconded for substantial compliance for Caterpillar. Public comment on this abatement? Okay, all those in favor of finding Caterpillar in substantial compliance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion carries.
Next one is Castle Coke, which is a real estate abatement, and they were found in compliance.
A motion for compliance for Castle Coke?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to find Castle Coke in substantial compliance, compliance, compliance. Is there a comment from the public regarding this abatement? Okay, all those in favor of substantial compliance for Castle Coke say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Next is Heartland Automotive, they have two, one real estate, one personal property, and they were found in compliance.
Is there a motion for compliance for both real estate and personal property for Heartland Automotive?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to find Heartland Automotive in substantial compliance. Public comment? Okay, all those in favor of finding Heartland Automotive in substantial compliance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Next is JAK Partners or Kirby Risk, and they have two real estate abatements, and they were both found in compliance.
Is there a motion for compliance for JAK Partners?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to find JAK Partners in substantial compliance. Public comments on this abatement? All right, all those in favor of finding JAK Partners in substantial compliance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Next is Lifesong Properties and Brands, they had one real estate and one personal property abatement, and they were found in compliance.
Motion for Lifesong Properties to be in substantial compliance?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to find them in substantial compliance. Public comment on Lifesong Properties' abatements? Okay, all those in favor of finding Lifesong Properties signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Next is Liquid Spring, they had a personal property abatement, and they were found in compliance.
Is there a motion for compliance?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to find Liquid Spring in substantial compliance. Public comment on this abatement? All those in favor of finding Liquid Spring in substantial compliance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Oscar Winsky Company, they had one real estate abatement, and they were found in compliance.
Motion for compliance?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to find Oscar Winsky in substantial compliance. Public comment on this abatement? All those in favor of finding Oscar Winsky in substantial compliance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
We have Ray Magnet Wire, and they have two personal property abatements, and they were found in substantial compliance. If you do have any questions for this company, we do have representatives here tonight.
Would council like to hear from representatives, or is there a motion to find substantial compliance?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to find Ray Magnet Wire in substantial compliance. Any public comment? All those in favor of finding Ray Magnet Wire in substantial compliance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Next we have SIA, and they have a total of 14 abatements, six real estate and eight personal property, and they were all found in compliance.
Is there a motion for compliance?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to find SIA in substantial compliance of our 14 abatements. Mr. Clinker?
I abstained as a contractor for SIA.
Would the record please show that Mr. Clinker is abstaining from our 14 abatements regarding SIA? Public comment on SIA abatements? Okay, all those in favor of finding SIA in substantial compliance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's one extension. Motion carries. Thank you.
Then we have Coleman Cable South Wire, and they have four abatements, two personal property, two real estate, and they were found in substantial compliance.
Is there a motion for substantial compliance for Southwest Coleman Cable?
Some moves.
Second.
South Wire, sorry. Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to find Coleman Cable South Wire in substantial compliance. Public comment on this abatement? All those in favor of finding Coleman Cable South Wire in substantial compliance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
And Toyota Motors, they have two abatements, both personal property, they were found in compliance.
Motion for compliance?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded to find Toyota Motors in substantial compliance. Mr. Clinker?
I abstained from this as well.
Would the record please show that Mr. Clinker is abstaining from these two personal property abatements for Toyota Motors? Public comment on Toyota Motors' tax abatements? Okay, so, more of finding Toyota Motors in substantial compliance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One extension. Thank you, motion carries.
They have Wabash National with four abatements, one real estate, three personal property, and they were recommended for compliance.
Motion for compliance?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded to find Wabash National in substantial compliance. Public comment on these abatements? Mr. Brown?
I'll have to abstain from this as I am employed by a contractor, Wabash National.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Would the record show that he has abstained from these four abatements, one real estate, three personal property? Any public comment on the Wabash National abatements? All those in favor of Wabash National in substantial compliance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Just one extension.
And the last one is Whirlway Coatings, they had a personal property abatement, and they were found in compliance.
Motion for compliance?
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded to find, I believe it's Vravog.
Vravog, yes.
Coating in substantial compliance. Any public comment on this abatement? Okay, all those in favor of finding Vravog coating in substantial compliance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carson.
Oh, maybe.
Any other public comment this evening? Okay, we move on to public comment. Public comment portion of our evening requires that you refrain from using any inappropriate language and that you limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address when you approach the podium. Thank you.
I'm going to time myself to make that. My name is Rose Cat Maskey, I live at 334 South 26th Street, Lafayette, Indiana. As many of you are probably aware, there was an accident on the Harrison Bridge this weekend, on Friday morning, a mountain rider cyclist was rear-ended by an FTV. The cyclist suffered spinal injuries, and the driver had their car impounded and was driving under suspended license. Because of the accident, was distracted driving and has had life-changing consequences for the cyclist. I became a member of the Goto Affleck community in 2014. I was riding on the app and I work at Purdue University. I'm a pedestrian cyclist and the driver, automobile driver. I've consciously chosen to move my ass back and forth across the river. I try to enjoy the diversity of experience that I get from living on both sides of the river and experiencing better, much better than the area. I use all the bridges, the Myers Bridge, the State Street Bridge, and Harrison Bridge with my bicycle. I'm also a resident of the Raffleck community, including the State Street and Raffleck communities, the bicycle pedestrian communities, and I'm very glad to be part of Lafayette Bicycle and Pedestrian Raffleck community meetings. I mean, there's a big meeting coming up and I'm a little confused to be at, so a public presentation of that. So, that's all very important, but according to bicycleapp.com, a collision with an automobile is the greatest fear most people have about cycling. In fact, the fear of a collision with an automobile is the greatest danger intended to getting more people on bikes. Many people want to ride, but they're so afraid some bicycle infrastructure is inadequate or is non-existent. All of this community that we've been doing, and both have the ability to get even angles at the river. So I'm calling in here as our leaders in the city of Lafayette, here in Moore, to engage actively and we want to be proud of that with the community and the state to make sure that there is safe travel for cyclists and pedestrians across the river. I appreciate the passion this week from the audience, and I appreciate that this is in progress. But when it's fully done, and we need it, we need to improve the road conditions, we need to increase signage, including may use tolling signage, and we also need to work to slow down traffic. So we agree to join us in this more aggressive approach. To that end, I invite you to attend an event on Saturday, this kind of Sunday, June 6th, called Goto Affleck, taking place in Lafayette. Where in honor of our angel friends, members of the Lafayette and West Lafayette community, we practice safe and livable cycling on the Harrison Bridge. We went here for two weeks, and we did really proud, and over all day, so I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening?
My name is Susan Schecter, and I reside at 1001 Ferry Street in Lafayette. I'm a commuting cyclist. I cycle from my home on Ferry Street to the research park at Purdue. I have been crossing on the pedestrian bridge, which is now closed. That leaves me no legal and safe route to get to work. Had all of the vehicular crossings, legal vehicular crossings been closed, it would have been unthinkable. And I guess that's all I have to say about that. Except thank you Lafayette for providing, because Lafayette's the entity that provided a safe and legal route for pedestrians and cyclists to get across the river. The Harrison Street Bridge is the county's administrative entity, and the 26th Bridge and I guess 52th Bridge are INDOTs. But I wanted to speak for a moment about cycling as an economic development activity. Maintaining an automobile costs at least $8,000 a year. These are numbers that, 10 years ago, when I went down a car, and actually in 2000, we stopped supporting one car, so we, I think we just used a swimming car. So in the last 15 years, I've saved at least $120,000. And most of that I've invested in Lafayette. Now, for every cyclist who leaves the pump behind and travels by pedal power, most of those people are spending those dollars that they're not spending in their car, they're spending locally. Cyclists, the cycling community is a huge advocate of buying local. And so those dollars stay here and really have a much larger economic impact than the transportation dollars that are used to go buy automobile. So I think it's important that we keep that in mind. An accident like this has a chilling impact on cycling, and I think we ought to support cycling. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schecter. Any other public comment this evening?
Hi, Margie Deverall, I'm our project manager for the Economic Development Department. I heard about the accident on Friday, and I've had several conversations with a number of the cyclists that I know, and I'm a cyclist myself, my boss is a cyclist, and even he and I talked about crossing the bridges, and it is a concern. I would highly recommend anyone, you know, who can come to this ride on Saturday to come, you know, I'm going to be there, I'm supportive of this. The planning process that we're going through right now, the bicycle pedestrian plan, when you read information from the League of American Cyclists and you talk about what makes a community bicycle-friendly, they frequently use what's called the five E's. Engineering is one of them. You can't engineer all your problems away, just like you can't get everywhere you want to go on a bike on trails. So some of the other E's are education, enforcement, encouragement, evaluation. So this ride on Saturday is education, and it is encouragement. And I'm happy to hear that the enforcement of true foot safe passing distance was taken into account, and the driver was cited. And I'm, you know, equally happy that that is a law, not only in West Lafayette, but in Lafayette. So, you know, we've been planning for a year. We've been looking at the engineering solutions to many of the preferred routes in Lafayette. But along with that plan, when it comes to you, and it will come to you for the first time if, you know, everything goes well, in July, and then again in August. Also includes policies and programs, and education is part of that. And education isn't just about telling drivers to be safe around bikes, it's about telling cyclists to be safe, you know, users of the road themselves. Everybody who uses the road has to use it responsibly, and if we, you know, if we have this plan and we put these efforts into effect, I think then whether you're in a bus, a car, on a bike, or walking, the road should be safe for everyone. So, and just as a sidebar, a comment was made about the bridges. You know, it's a frustration that we've experienced, even when we've had our advisory meetings and our standing committee meetings talking about this plan. We don't have a plan so far. You know, the city's jurisdiction goes to the river, and the bridges are the responsibility and the jurisdiction of either the county or the state. And so, in fairness, I called Opal today, and we had a conversation because, you know, I'm, am I done? So she was going to talk to the county commissioners and get back with me, you know, and I would definitely support the idea of the three jurisdictions working together and looking at this, because they are the pinch point, to see if there's something that we can do even temporarily to make them safer, but also, you know, in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
If I could just add one thing to what Margie said there. I'm not going to make it sound like it's around the corner, because it's still a long way away, but if all of you've also been following, the Wabash River Enhancement Corporation master plan, in that master plan, it calls for two additional bridges, bicycle pedestrian bridges, not, nothing like the Myers Bridge, not big wide, but wide enough. And it calls for two of those to actually cross the river at different points for Lafayette. For just bicycles and pedestrians, that's actually part of that plan. And then again, it's still a long way away, because, and it's going to be a rough two years when they close it. But when they rebuild the bridge over the Wabash there at Sagamore Parkway between Lafayette and West Lafayette, we had spoke with INDOT, and they're going to put a special section on that bridge for cyclists and bicy, cyclists and pedestrians. And then Lafayette and West Lafayette are both working on the switchback in West Lafayette and the link to the Heritage Trail in Lafayette. So those things are, they're on the books, they're planning, they're going to happen at some day. I know that doesn't fix the problem now, and I'm not minimizing that, but I do think it's important to let people know that as we are doing this planning, we are taking that very much into consideration. So at some point in the future, there'll actually be three additional ways to get back and forth across the river, if you're a cyclist or a pedestrian, that you won't be directly interfacing with vehicular traffic, which I think is a great thing, and people will really enjoy it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further public comment this evening?
Hello, everyone, Michael Dick, I'm at 425 and a half North 7th Street in Lafayette, Indiana. I would like to second Rosa's invite to all of the council to come out to the event that we're having on Saturday, that's 10:00 a.m. until dusk. We're going to be riding our bicycles across the bridges. And I encourage you to bring your bicycle and experience what it's like riding a bicycle on those roads currently. And at the very least, come out and see what it's like for yourself, what it is like riding a bicycle on the bridges currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to add, I saw you stand up earlier.
Hello, my name is Cass Silva, I live at 120 Iowa's in the street. I just wanted to point out that, you know, this friend, a local cyclist who got hurt on the Harrison Bridge, was riding a preferred path by cyclists. You know, it's a pretty common use path, you know, maybe some people prefer the pedestrian bridge, but it's a pretty good route. It has two lanes, and that's part of what makes it a good route. You know, not, I mean, there are things that could be better, but, you know, just to point that this is a pretty decent route for cyclists. And then two years ago, also during Bike Month, you know, Robin Smith was killed on another route that, you know, 9th Street going towards Battleground. This is another route that is commonly used by cyclists, you know, maybe not all would feel comfortable. But it is important that people who want to ride bikes in their community, you know, whether they're like myself, a commuter, or they're just into professional cycling, or whether they just have a nod of interest and they want to learn more about it and feel comfortable to get around, you know, we need to have a community that where people can see themselves comfortable and safe cycling. And even though, you know, the Harrison Bridge is, you know, not in the city's jurisdiction, and even though, you know, I'm so excited that, you know, the mayor is behind, you know, the improvement for bike infrastructure, and we have great plans, I'm excited that there are people who want to support that that are working already in the city. But, you know, I mean, people like myself who are volunteering in their free time, trying to do what we can to reach out to the community and build bike culture. We need the city of Lafayette to be as passionate as we are, whether it's trying to influence people day-to-day, out in the community culturally, or influence the county to, you know, improve their paths that we are using locally. So, and that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment this evening? Further public comment this evening?
Hi, my name's Aaron Madrid. I live at 1209 Elizabeth Street, um, and I'm kind of going to talk for two seconds about bikes also, but in a little different way. I'm actually here tonight representing, uh, Highway Safety Services. We're a local, uh, highway contracting company. We're responsible for the maintenance of traffic on most of the construction that's causing you all sorts of traffic delays, basically all over Tepugon County right now. Yeah, you're welcome. You just put the signs up and paint the roads and do what we're told mostly, so, uh, it's not my fault. Uh, but anyway, uh, I am an avid cyclist, uh, and our company has been, previously we were Mike Madrid Company. It's my dad's company. We've been in this town for my entire life, going on thirty-one years now, um, and we care a lot about this town and this community. And since I'm taking more of a leadership role, uh, in that company, I went to my boss and sat down with him and told him about what happened to my friend who was hit on the, uh, the Harrison Bridge. We were actually also the ones that put the sheros that are eastbound currently on the Harrison Bridge, and also the bike path that goes up Union. Uh, if you've driven over the Harrison Bridge, you'll notice that most of those markings are pretty faded now. Um, obviously, infrastructure isn't the, and, uh, be a solution, but it does help. Um, putting those markings right in the middle of the road helps tell drivers that cyclists can be here, and that's important, uh, and we think that that's great for the community. And so, we wanted to offer to donate the labor, the materials, uh, the equipment, everything required to go out and both refresh the existing, uh, sheros that are on the Harrison Bridge, uh, and paint, and also add new sheros to the westbound lanes of the Harrison Bridge. Uh, you can think of it as a detour route for cyclists, if you would like. One of the things that you'll notice all over, all these construction jobs all over town is that there's those detour routes that lead cars around them. We can consider this part of a detour route for the pedestrian bridge, if you'd like, but we'd be happy to donate those things. And I know that was a city project originally, from what I understand, the Harrison Bridge coming eastbound on Union, um, so I thought that that might be an appropriate time to come and talk to you guys about that. We, if we need to talk to, uh, Opal at the county, or West Lafayette, we'll go to them as well and let them know that we're willing to do the other westbound lanes, but I just wanted to let you know that that's something, we care about this community and helping out the city and cyclists, um, and we'd like to offer that service to you free of charge. So, let me hear what you have to say.
Yeah.
Know who I should talk to about that? We're back there.
You can watch me right back there in the clothes off shirt.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Madrid. Very nice of you. Excellent citizenship. Uh, we have another community this evening to make public comment.
Um, my name's Dale Cook. I live at 2134 Monon Avenue. It's not a good community. I try to take care of my yard, keep the, keep the weeds down, mow it twice a week. I've got photos of houses that I've taken on, on the north end. It's a photo junk in the front yard. I was sending a letter because I had a front end of my race car in my backyard, which, you know, when I go to race, I, I turn on my car and go race, come up to the car in the garage, put front end in the backyard. I've got photos of a house here, the weed and food control in this town is horrible. You can't even see the house here. I'll, I'll pass these around to the council if they'd like to see them. House on, uh, 21st and Monon Avenue that used to belong to Frost family, they passed away. Somebody bought it. Trees growing up around the yard and around the house. This is a favor of mine. It's the front yard of a house on the north end, nothing but junk in the front yard. I had a neighbor that got a fifty-dollar fine for having a utility trailer parked beside his garage with building materials loaded on it. There's a car parked across the alley, been there for years, no motor, no, no transmission, expired plates. Here's a picture of the house with a utility trailer parked in the yard, been there for years with, with material and junk piled on it. Nothing been done about it. I'd like to propose to this council that the ordinance be changed for, for reading, lawn and weeds be changed to seven inches, as they did in Frankfurt, Indiana, from ten inches. I had to call on my next-door neighbor. He's a winner. Mowed his yard three times last year. And, uh, but, I think it's time the city tried to clean up the north end a little bit. Pass a reservation or an ordinance with some teeth in it to get these properties cleaned up. My neighbor that lives across the aisle from me, she, she doesn't want to get up and speak. Her next-door neighbor has trucks parked in the driveway with expired plates and junk loaded on it, and just sitting there for months and months and months. What can we do about that?
Have you contacted the engineer's office about that? Have you gotten any feedback about that?
There's very good chance.
Right.
Some people do, some people just pay the ticket. They'll, they'll look at two of them.
Does you want to take the addresses from his photos?
Yeah.
And are you able to leave a set of those for us?
Oh, gladly.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Further public comment this evening? Mr. Klinker?
Mr. Jordan.
Mr. Mighty?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of adjournment say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.